Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 18, 2011, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. My apologies for getting a bit of a late start, but we were upstairs working on some budget matters. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. First action of council is approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we approve the form of meeting agenda for this evening's meeting that has been published to the public and provided to us. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Adoption of the consent agenda is the next item before us. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt the consent agenda. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. And that takes us right to the America's Promise Award Presentation. And Jennifer, who's handling this matter?
We have Heather Hane Anderson here from Connecting with Kids.
All right, good. We've got an array of folks here. That's good.
Good evening. My name is Heather Hane Anderson, and I am the Executive Director of Edinas Connecting with Kids. As such, I'm fortunate to be able to bring you some good news on this very chilly evening. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you on behalf of all the contributors of Connecting with Kids to celebrate the selection of Edina as one of America's 100 Best Communities for Young People by America's Promise Alliance, the nation's largest partnership organization dedicated to youth and children. It is a competition that recognizes communities' efforts to reduce high school dropout rates. We are especially pleased to say that this is the second consecutive year that we have received this recognition. Although the award application was done under the aegis of Connecting with Kids, it was a collaborative effort, and with me this evening are several community members who are keeping their distance, who played a part in that effort. Julie Rogers Bascom, she's the Service Learning Coordinator for Edina Public Schools, and Julie did the lion's share of the application. Dick Crockett is the Executive Director for Edina Community Foundation. Ari Larson-Manti is the President of the Edina Chamber of Commerce and the newly minted Chair for Connecting with Kids. And Scott Neal, of course, our City Manager. All five of us take the well-being of Edina's youth very seriously, and as such, we serve on the Board of Connecting with Kids. Edina was selected for this honor because of its ongoing, community-wide commitment to raising healthy young people, encouraging youth leadership, and cultivating high-achieving students. The City of Edina, the Chamber of Commerce, Edina Community Foundation, and Edina Public Schools, along with all the residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations that have worked and collaborated with each other to create such a great community, all deserve the recognition for playing a part in earning this award. I congratulate all of you and all of us for this achievement, and I ask you to join me in thanking for all of those who worked so hard to make Edina one of America's 100 Best Communities for Young People. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Heather. Here. Julia, it's a wonderful-looking award.
Last year, it was a pushkin. You must go up when you get the sweep.
I wonder, Jennifer, could we put that on the middle table there, and folks at home can get a look at it when they watch? And then we can come up for a photo. I'm actually wondering if the whole council shouldn't come down to revel in being one of America's Best Cities for Youth.
No, they don't rank within the 100 where we stand, do they? Because I don't want us to be the best, but I would settle for the top two.
Oh.
That's very nice of you.
We're above average.
All right. Let's come down.
Do you want to grab it?
It's all about for one.
Jennifer, you'll be at the hind row.
Yes.
You really need to scrounge up things from your shoulder to shoulder.
In court, it's Mary.
There we go. There's Hanson Group. Here's the first one. Change my surroundings. Okay, here we go. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
changed before it was adopted? Okay. All right, good. Thank you. Okay. The first public hearing matter we have in front of us this evening will be handled by Director Teague, and it is potential issuance of a conditional use permit involving a proposed project at the Edina Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you, it was a conditional use permit to build an addition to the Southview Middle School. I'm sure you're familiar with the site, just east of Highway 100, south of Edina Country Club and City Hall. What the Edina schools are proposing to do is build a 5,600-square-foot, two-story addition in the southeast corner of the school. The addition would be located right here. The addition would include a new area for a kitchen, for the cafeteria, and various classroom space. The setback would maintain the existing 117-foot setback from Concord Road, the front property line. Here's a look at where the addition would be located, and this is the existing building line, so it would go right into that corner right there. Primary issue that were considered by staff and the Planning Commission, is the proposal reasonable, and does it meet all of our city code requirements? Well, staff and the Planning Commission find that it does meet all of our code requirements. It is reasonable. It meets all of our conditional use permit findings, as outlined in the staff report. It meets all of our minimum code requirements for parking, setback, et cetera. The addition would match the existing school. We have a materials board that I can show to the council. It would match the existing brick that's on the school today. And the addition would address a building space needs that is going on at the middle school today. So with that, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
All right. Thank you, Director Teague. Questions for Director Teague? All right, we'll let you be seated, and we'll move into the proponent's presentation. Who will represent the school district this evening? Yes, sir. Come on forward.
I'll be.
I take it you're with Wald Architects and Engineers?
This is the school district's self. I'm the supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, Steve Brister.
Okay.
And I've got a representative from Wald Architects and Engineers along with it.
All right, good. Your name and address, please.
Steve Brister. I am at 1513 147th Avenue Northeast in Ham Lake, Minnesota.
All right, Steve. Go ahead.
The use permit, most of what we've had to, where we've arrived at right now is a study that was done. Wald Architects and Engineers were involved in that study. It's kind of a long-range plan, but some of the immediate needs that we have, kind of identified, Southview Middle School being needing more space for education. This plan would provide us with some additional room down in the cafeteria and create five new classrooms for the school itself. The addition will be instructional space increased. It'll increase the space by five classrooms, and the additional room in the cafeteria would be expanded by removing some additional classrooms. And then the cafeteria expansion would not increase the footprint of the building either. So the, and the majority of the funding is from the lease levy. And I think this was, it was all ran by our special education people as well, so they've approved.
All right. Questions for Steve? Folks? Let me just confirm a couple of things, Steve, if you wouldn't mind. I understand that a school is conditionally permitted as a use in an R1 district, and therefore this use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I noticed on the compliance table that we publish, the city standard for front setback on Concord is 50 feet, and you're going to be at 117 feet.
Correct.
Flush with the existing building, I take it, if this is approved?
Correct.
All right. Side street, city standard is 50 feet, and you're going to be 500-plus feet.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And same thing with the rear setback and the side setback, the rear setback to the west, the side setback to the south, again, 50 feet, and you'll be 500-plus feet. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And the building height will be 25 feet, and the city standard is 30 feet. You're doing, you've got 242 trees that exist on the site, 128 are required, is that correct?
Correct.
And parking, you've got 554 existing parking spaces, 542 spaces required.
Correct.
Is that correct? You don't need any variances for this project?
No.
You just need a conditional use permit.
Conditional use, correct.
Other questions for Steve? Just point time. Any questions for the architect?
Just a quick question on the, is there any change to the landscape or vegetation?
There are a couple of trees that are going to be right where the entrance is. We are moving those. We're relocating them, so they won't go away from the site. We're just going to relocate them.
Okay.
And you've provided us with a materials board. You're prepared to build according to the specifications of Wald Architects, using the materials that you presented here tonight?
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
All right. That's the standard we hold everybody to, by the way, if we approve something. Member Swenson?
Question for the architect.
Would you identify yourself?
I'm Nick Marcoochi, Wald Architects, 305 St. Peter Street, St. Paul, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Hi. It was my kid's school. I walk by there all the time, and that entrance that you're going to take out is kind of a big, open expanse where a child can wait in a covered area for their parent to come pick them up, should they wait down below instead of Southview Lane side. Is there anything that would cover them if they were waiting for a parent now?
Yes.
You have a little dash line, but I'm not sure what that means.
There is a new entrance proposed, and there is a covering, there is a small overhang that sticks out from the building.
Okay.
And that's what that dash line is, I think.
Okay, so you can...
You could sit, you can wait outside the door and be protected.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't quite have the same open expanse that the other one had as far as safety goes. Are you comfortable with this?
I would think it almost has more protection for a person while they're waiting. It's, the area now is kind of a plaza area.
Yep, it is.
We're filling that in.
Right, okay.
All right. Other questions for the architect or for Steve?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Stand by for some potential questions. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open this matter up now for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter or inquire as to the project? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing no one expressing a desire to be heard, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved in second, and we close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved in second, and we approve the issuance of the conditional use permit, Resolution 2011-96, covers the resolution language.
Does that include the materials?
And, yes. I would assume that the maker of the motion would be comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely.
And the seconder?
It's Josh.
Yes, all right.
Josh.
Thank you.
All right. We will add as a condition, number three, to the resolution that the school district must build according to the plans and specifications provided and the materials provided to the council this evening.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Well, this is an evening that we have, once a year, we'll have about 12 or 13 public hearings in a row here, with a variety of improvements, proposed improvements, assessments. We've got street reconstruction projects that need to go through final assessment, and we'll take them one at a time. And the first matter before us this evening has Director Keprios presenting it, and that's some tree removal assessments that we need to deal with. Thank you. Director Keprios.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, and members of the council. Tonight, I have three public hearings, three different assessments, thank you. Three different assessments to go through, one through PowerPoint. For this one, for the tree removal improvement, under our city code, we do abide by the state law that requires us to abide by the prevention of shade tree diseases called for for both Dutch elm and oak wilt. The way we do this, our city forester identifies a diseased tree and notifies the homeowner by registered mail, and then the homeowner has 21 days to then comply. Homeowners do have the option to remove and dispose of the diseased tree on their own. And in this case, this past year, we've had nine different property owners who chose to have the city contracted removal of those trees. We had a total of 12 trees on nine different properties in 2011. The city forester then secures quotes from private contractors, and as you notice, the cost of tree really does vary. It's based on its diameter at breast height, as they call it, and of course, the larger the tree, the more expensive it is to remove and dispose of. Just to be clear, staff does not remove these trees. Those are all contracted. The guidelines we use for these assessments, if it's under $500, we recommend a one-year assessment. If it's between $500 and $1,000, we recommend a two-year assessment, and for $1,000 and up, it's a three-year assessment and additional years upon request. The nine properties, as shown in the staff report, a variety of oaks, elms, we had a couple of hazardous trees that had to be dealt with, became public safety hazards due to either wind damage or a dead or dying tree. And you can see the assessment years that are attached to them. And each property also includes a $30 administrative fee for the program, for those nine, each of the nine. So at this time, staff is recommending the assessments, as shown in the report, for all nine properties, the stated, and for the years that have been assigned.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Keprios at this point? Members Sprague?
Director Keprios, any, I see we have got various elm trees. How are we doing on Dutch elm disease in the city in general?
I think I'll ask Vince Cockrell to come up and answer that one. Our city forester presents a report to us annually, and off the top of my head, I want to make sure I get more accurate information.
Mayor, City Council, Vince Cockrell, Parks Superintendent. We're slightly below last year, but we average somewhere between 300 and 500 tree removals per year as far as diseased trees go. We're at about 320 or 340 right now.
And are the majority of those on park property or on individual private property?
Yeah, it's pretty split. We've got stuff on parkland that our staff takes care of, and we end up with a year-end tree report on that. They're quite busy, but I know Tom's been busy in the country club area, as well as some areas down in the Indian Hills with some oak wilt issues, so I'm going to say it's split 50/50, at least at this point.
And so, and then 300 to 500 a year, that's just for Dutch elm disease, not for...
That's Dutch elm disease as well as oak wilt.
Okay, both together.
And that does not include hazardous trees, wind damaged trees, things that we get called on on a regular basis.
Okay. And anything for the ash borer? Any of those, has that come to Edina yet?
Has not been spotted in town yet. We do check, and Tom has sent some samples in as well, as we've done some samples on trees and haven't found anything at this point.
Thank you. That's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for inquiry. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would care to come up and inquire or comment regarding this proposed assessment? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing no one expressing a desire to come forward and testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved in second, and we close the public hearing. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Is there a motion to adopt the Resolution 2011-97?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Your Honor.
Excuse me, I just noticed that favorable roll call on all of you. All right, okay. Roll call, please. Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye and aye. All right. Thank you. Next matter, Director Keprios, is the aquatic weeds proposed special assessment there.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council. For the aquatic weed improvement, this is a city-administered aquatic weed control service program, and this service is actually one that is requested by homeowners, that really could be administered by themselves, by their associations, but they request the city to assist them with this program. It is not one that's required either by the city or the Department of Natural Resources, but one, again, that's requested by the homeowners. First one would be Indian Head Lake. They request us to work with their homeowners association to do aquatic weed control, and there are 33 assessable units around Indian Head Lake, and there is a variety of expenses associated with that control. And again, Vince Cockrell implements this program and hires Natural Reflections and Aqua Care and whatnot, and does the aeration expenses. The assessment comes out of the 33 assessable units for a $12,810.39 expenditure, comes to $388.20 per home. And for Arrowhead Lake, much the same program. In this case, we have 37 assessable units, again, much the same services. This year, it came to $14,949.62. Assessed among 37 assessable units comes to $404.05 per household. The last, the aquatic weed one, is Mill Pond, the wider section of Minnehaha Creek. And in this case, we have 63 assessable units, of which the Browndale Park becomes a part of a city-owned property, so we assume a $1,500 share of the expense. This year, we had a first cutting of $6,770 and a second cutting of just over $6,500. This year did not require a third cutting. The total came to $11,883 when you take out the city's share of $1,500. Spread out amongst the 63 assessable units comes $189 per household. As an overview, the Arrowhead Lake, 37 assessable units, $404.05 per household. Indian Head Lake, 33 assessable units at $388.20 per home. And then the Mill Pond, at 63 assessable units, at $189 per household, and all of these would be a one-year assessment.
All right, thank you. Questions for Director Keprios? Members Sprague?
Just as an aside, but related, are any of these associations making use of the grant programs with the watershed districts? Do you know?
I don't know if Vince knows the answer to that. I do not.
Not that we're aware of.
Have they, I mean, have they been informed that they can do, I mean, I think phosphorus control would be assisted by the buffer strips that could be installed in partnership with the watershed district, so I just want to make sure that they're aware.
Yeah, we'll talk internally with Jesse Struve, our utility engineer. It's kind of our liaison with the watershed district to see if we can do that.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Did someone else have a question for Director Keprios on this matter, on the council? All right, thank you. I'm going to open this matter up as a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and inquire or comment regarding this proposed assessment? Welcome.
Good evening. Mark Sporano, 4905 East Sunny Slope Road, Edina. Simple clarification questions, please, for Mayor, City Council, or Mr. Cockrell. I just would like to know what agency performs the aquatic weed removal, specifically on
Lake Weed Harvesting. They're a company out of Lake Minnetaka.
And that company is up for re-engagement for next year's harvesting of the weeds?
We go out for quotes every year, yes.
Quotation, is it a formal RFP process that happens?
I'm not sure. Yes, it is. Written bids. What I do is, it's a really limited company, as far as numbers out there. We've, in the past, solicited people up north, because it's such a short window of time that equipment's in use, we have in the past contracted company, Lake Restoration, their weed harvesting went out of business. Another one that I can't picture, up out of Roseville, that company went out of business. Hanupon County thought they could beat the rush and bought their own machines a few years back. They ran it for three years. That went out of business because it's really expensive to keep the equipment up. As far as companies around here, they're very limited in number. I've solicited all the way up to the lakes regions of Minnesota, Brainerd, Malax, so on and so forth, those people, because of the expenditures of getting the equipment down here, were not interested unless they could spend the entire summer on Mill Pond.
Right.
So this particular company we're at right now, we've used them for about three, four years right now.
And we feel comfortable that they're going to provide good service going forward?
As far as I know, after the first cut, well, here's, as long as we've got an audience here. This year, we had, if you could give us a quick flashback to earlier this spring when Public Works was loading sandbags up on pallets and so on and so forth, the water levels stayed really high for quite a bit of the early summer. We typically contract, and I have to cut this contract in February because these guys go away, they are so busy. There's plenty of lakes, Baldigo Lake is one of them, White Bear Lake's one of them, Lake Minnetaka, obviously, that would just soon keep these guys on-site the entire summer. So we commit to these people, like I say, sometime, right around between February and March. In the past, I've always asked to try to get the Mill Pond cleaned up for the Fourth of July weekend, as well as for the Labor Day weekend. All permits statewide expire on August 31st, so if you get weeds September 1st, you have to live with them until the following spring. This year, I called and begged the guy to stay off the Mill Pond because the water was high, and there was not a single weed on that lake. And I check it at least once a week, sometimes three times a week. There was not a single weed on that body of water the middle of June, when we had contracted him to be out there. So I asked him, I said, can you wait till after Fourth of July now? He did do that, so he pushed all of his customers back. We did it sometime in the middle of July, I'm going to say July 15, July 17, something like that. Okay, then we got to where I asked him to do it again the first half of August, and we didn't really need it then, waited until August 15th, and I said, can you call me August 15th, and we'll see if we need you? It was starting to show up then. He came out, he only had three days because he was committed to three other previously contracted with lakes. He gave us three days, packed up and left. It wasn't perfect, but, and then, of course, more weeds did show up after September 1st, but that's how it went this year.
Am I out of time?
You are. But if you, do you have a question or comment?
I just want to say, I think Vince has a great job, and I'm just concerned that we got a limited provider, and I just want to make sure that the head of Parks and Recs, I don't know if Mr. Cockrell is going to retire in the near future, but I'm very concerned. I would like to keep this program up to its stellar performance. That's purely my reason for being here. I think you do a fantastic job. I'm just worried about it in the future. That's it. Thank you.
Mark, thanks for coming over, taking the time to do that.
I didn't know you were retiring.
All right. Anyone else with regard to this proposed special assessment? Anyone else desire to testify? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion?
I would approve this. B1, B2.
Second.
All right. Further discussion? Roll call.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Next is, uh, item five, B three, which is Resolution 2011-99, related to weed mowing improvements.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland, members of the council.
B three.
We have a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, we have a weed mowing improvement. Uh, city code requires us to, uh, to maintain, uh, the, any vegetation that exceeds ten inches in height. And we do have a part-time weed inspector that goes around and, and, uh, be sure that the residents stay in compliance with that. Uh, when weeds exceed the ten inches in height, our weed inspector attempts to first reach the property owner in person. If that fails, then secondly, by phone, and lastly, if need be, by certified letter. Uh, once we've made contact with the resident, they have ten days to comply. If, uh, compliance doesn't take place, then it's our park maintenance staff that actually goes on the property and cuts the weeds, and then the property is assessed for the cost of labor and equipment. And, of course, they have the opportunity to pay it in advance, or it would shows up on an assessment. This year, we have only three properties in 2011 that were cut by park maintenance staff. And they are, as you see, ranging from a hundred and fifty dollars to a hundred and eighty-seven fifty. Uh, those would all be, uh, one-year assessments, and we're recommending those three properties, uh, as shown for a one-year.
Thank you. Questions for Director Kepreos from council?
I just have one.
Member Brindle.
The, uh, property on Vernon Lane, is that a vacant lot, or is that a lot with a home on it? I'm just curious.
Uh, I'm not certain, to be honest. Vince, do you recall? No, he doesn't recall.
Okay. I'm just curious, who, who pays this if it's a vacant lot that hasn't been sold yet? Is it the developer?
Whoever owns it at the time.
Whoever owns it? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Director Kepreos from council? All right. We're going to open this matter as a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to, uh, inquire or testify regarding this matter, this proposed special assessment? Seeing no one coming forward, hearing no one expressing a desire to testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second and we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second and we adopt Resolution 2011-99 with regard to the weed mowing assessments. And, uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. And next, um, we're going to move into a series of proposed special assessments handled by Director Houle, our city engineer and head of our Public Works Department. And we're going to start with a proposed, uh, maintenance, uh, assessment down at Fiftieth and France, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I get into the, uh, the next, uh, eight, uh, public hearings, I'd like to just do a little forward here that, um, in lieu of time, that, or in light of time that we have tonight, is that all, what I'm going to say in the next few slides actually will apply to all the public hearings that we'll be going through in the next. Nope. It's on now. Um, once again, uh, mayor and members of the council, um, I'm going to go through a forward here of, of, um, some slides that actually apply, will apply to all the public hearings. Um, the, uh, the projects that, that I'm involved with on the four twenty-nine, they're basically for the state statutes to improve the city's infrastructure based on the chapter four twenty-nine of our state statutes. Um, we'll go into the pub, into the final assessment hearings in a second, but all the, uh, the final assessments are based on city policy that, that you folks had adopted on September seventh, uh, twenty-ten. And then I'll cover some payback methods, the four ways to, uh, to, uh, pay, pay a special assessment. Kind of the summarization of the payback is, one is to pay the entire balance, um, after, after you approve the, uh, the final, uh, special assessments. One is to do a partial pay of, of twenty-five percent or more prior to our certification to Hanipon County, which will be on November twenty-eighth, I believe, this year. And then do nothing, let it go to, uh, to, uh, that we would certify it, and then it would be payable over ten years. And then actually, the remainder portion of the partial pay would be, be payable over ten years on number two also. Or else, uh, um, enter into an assessment deferral, and that's based off of, uh, of age and income, basically, is kind of, and hardship essentially, is, is what the assessment deferral would be. The, uh, the city policy, what I did is just kind of picked out what we're looking at tonight for, for our special assessments. Uh, the local roadway reconstruction is based off of ten years payback, and that goes back to, uh, uh, number two and number three, partial pay and the do nothing. And then the maintenance districts is a one-year payback. And the maintenance districts, the special assessments are actually, um, for, for work that was done in twenty-ten, actually. So we're always a, a year in a rear on, on the maintenance districts. The, uh, interest for, for the projects, that'll be covered in, in a minute here, on the roadway projects, there'll be a ten-year payback period, like I say, and the interest rate this year is four point three percent, um, interest rate on those paybacks. And then the maintenance assessments are one-year at six point five percent. Uh, we're doing something a little bit differently this year, is that after you approve the, uh, the special assessments, or hopefully approve the, the final assessments tonight, is tomorrow morning, is that we will actually, uh, send out statements. In the past, we've had calls, uh, two months, three months after the fact, um, saying, we didn't receive an invoice or a bill. Typically, on our, on our notices that we have to do for four twenty-nine, is that we do state this in the past, this is your final statement, you won't receive an invoice. So we thought, well, let's, uh, build it into the project, and we'll send out a, a statement to people that haven't paid. There's been a number of people that have actually paid, paid already. On the back of the statement, we'll have, that I show in the lower left, you can't read it, but basically it covers the payback option. So people have, will know, how can I pay, pay back? It'll be larger print, obviously, because it's on the back of, of the, uh, the statement. So with that, I will go into our public hearings here. The first, uh, final assessment hearings for the maintenance improvements at, uh, Fiftieth and France, uh, Business District. This is just located to the east of us, from City Hall here at Fiftieth and France. It's bounded by, uh, France Avenue on the east, which is our, our, um, the border of this, between the city of Edina and Minneapolis, and then Forty-Ninth and a Half at the north, uh, Fifty-First on the south, and Halifax on the west side. The assessable square footage is three hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet. The assessable costs for, I'd like to say, twenty-ten was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the proposed assessment is, uh, sixty-two cents per square foot. This, uh, shows you, uh, somewhat of a history that we've had in the last few years. It actually has gone down a little bit. What's not on this assessment, that'll be on, um, next year's assessment, will be the Lance, or the planter, uh, landscaping that we did, um, in twenty-ten, but since it has a maintenance period, that we won't be closing that out with the landscape contractor for another year or so. Um, with that, I'd recommend that you approve a special assessment, uh, M eleven for sixty-two cents per square foot.
Questions for Director Houle on this proposed assessment? All right. Um, thank you. Standby. I'm going to open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to, uh, comment or inquire regarding the, uh, proposed Resolution Number 2011-100, which would involve a, uh, proposed special assessment down at Fiftieth and France for the Business District? All right. Hearing no one and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second and that we adopt Resolution 2011-100, uh, adopting special assessments for the, uh, businesses in the Fiftieth and France Business District for, uh, maintenance in that area. Further discussion? Roll call.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. And did you note, Director Houle, that the, uh, charge for square foot has gone down of, to sixty-two point oh-three cents and eleven from seventy-eight point two-six cents in two thousand and ten?
I did.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Next matter is G eleven.
Uh, the next final assessment hearing is for G eleven, which is the, uh, maintenance that's performed in the Grandview Business District. Uh, this area is, is, uh, all the, uh, commercial properties that are just west of Highway one hundred, um, off of Vernon Avenue, up in the Grandview, um, area. The assessable square footage is four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The assessable cost was fourteen thousand, and it's, uh, three cents per square foot. Um, this gives you, uh, a history. This one has gone down also. We didn't replace as many plants, uh, in twenty-ten. Um, actually, we anticipate that this is going to climb up in the next couple of years because of some of the irrigation, depending what happens to our public works facility, where we have that, that portion of the districts tied into our public works facility for irrigation. So we have to, um, reconstruct that, that connection. And then we're anticipating that we'll probably have quite a few plants that are, are mature plants that have to be replaced in the next year or so. With that, I'd recommend that you approve a special assessment, G eleven, for three cents per square foot.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Houle? All right. I'll open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding the proposed, uh, maintenance assessment for the Grandview Business District? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved in second and we adopt, uh, uh, Grandview Business District Maintenance Improvement Number G eleven, which is embodied in Resolution 2011-101. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Uh, next matter is a proposed special assessment, assessment regarding a neighborhood street reconstruction project, Improvement BA-359, which is the Braemar Hills neighborhood.
Um, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, this is the Braemar Hills Neighborhood Reconstruction Final Assessment Hearing. Um, the Braemar Hills neighborhood is actually in the, in the southwest part of this, of the city, right off of Valley View Road. The, uh, the, the final cost for this street reconstruction is six hundred and two thousand dollars. Uh, the utility cost came out, uh, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, which is about thirty-six percent of the project costs, overall project costs. The assessment costs, like I say, is six hundred and two thousand, which is, equates to sixty-seven hundred dollars per residential equivalent unit. Um, our, if you recall it, our, our, our project hearing, we had a estimated assessment of ninety-one hundred dollars, so this is about a twenty-six percent reduction of what we had estimated originally. The, uh, the assessment costs are, each lot is, is essentially one REU with the exception of two of the lots off of Valley View Road, which are one-third REU because of their, their, uh, their addresses are on Valley View Road. But unless, that's per our special assessment policy. Uh, with that, I would recommend that, uh, you approve Special Assessment BA-359 for the attached assessment role that's in your packet tonight.
All right. Very good. Questions for Director Houle regarding the Braemar Hills work? All right. Uh, we're going to open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding the proposed special assessment for the Braemar Hills neighborhood? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing no one express a desire to testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second and we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Uh, do we have a motion regarding Improvement BA-359?
Second.
All right. Moved in second and we adopt, uh, Improvement BA-359, embodied in Resolution 2011-102. Uh, discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Next is, uh, the, uh, matter BA-360, which is the Pamela Park Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and council, this is the final assessment hearing for the Pamela Park Neighborhood Reconstruction. Uh, Pamela Park is, uh, located in about the central part of the city, uh, just off of Pamela Park, between Sixty-Second Street and Fifty-A Street. Um, the final assessment costs, or final, um, project costs for the street reconstruction is about one point one-five million dollars. Um, the total, uh, utility costs are nine hundred and six thousand dollars, which is about forty-four percent of the overall project cost. The, uh, assess, assessment costs, which is the same as the street costs, about one point one-five million dollars, equates to about fifty-three hundred dollars per residential equivalent unit. Um, the, the estimated assessment that we had at the project hearing was, uh, nine thousand dollars per REU, which is about a forty percent, uh, reduction, um, in, in that cost. With the, uh, the assessment costs itself, like I say, are, are one REU per, for residential lot. We did not have any one-third assessments, but the city property equates to twenty-nine residential equivalent units, using the same methodology that we had in the project hearing, at a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that the city would contribute. With that, I'd recommend approving, uh, Special Assessment BA-360 for your attached assessment role.
Question, any questions by council members for Director Houle?
Your honor. That's, that's quite a, a cost savings, almost fifty percent. Where, where does, what do you attribute that to? What part of the project?
Um, a, a lot of the project is just, we looked at that, um, council member Sprague and, and council, we, we looked at it to, to see, you know, why is it so low, essentially? And I, and I believe a lot of it's just competitiveness. Um, at that time, we were receiving quite a few bids on, on our, all our projects, since At that time, we were receiving quite a few bids on all our projects, since we're getting some competitiveness on it itself. And then some of it is, some of their monies are going into some of the underground, but when you look at the 44 percent, that's in line with what we had last year. Around 38 to 40 percent of our project costs were utilities. So I probably, this year, could say that it's competitiveness.
Okay. It strikes me, Director Houle, that as it was last year, we're seeing remarkable reductions in actual cost, overestimated cost, in part, I think, due to the state of the economy and the competitiveness, as you characterize it. And I'm glad Member Sprague pointed that out. As hard as it is to be thinking about assessing people for projects in this era, there are some awfully good deals out there.
There is. And what we're seeing is actually an increase in prices on this year's projects. We're seeing some of that economy is going away. We're seeing less general contractors, and I think some of the other municipalities are catching on to be bidding out doing projects at this time. So what we saw this last year was about probably three to four general contractors bidding on our projects, when a couple of years ago, we had 10 to 12 general contractors bidding on them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify regarding the proposed assessment to residential units in the Pamela Park neighborhood? Improvement BA-360. Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion on BA-360?
So moved.
All right. Any further discussion? It's been moved in second that we adopt improvement BA-360 embodied in Resolution Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Next matter is the proposed assessment involving the work that we did in the Interlochen Circle neighborhood.
Yes, this is the final assessment hearing for the Interlochen Circle Neighborhood Reconstruction. This is located in the northerly part of the city, off of Interlochen Boulevard. The final project costs for the streets were $136,000. The city utility costs were $84,000, which is about 38 percent of the project, overall project costs. The, once again, the assessment cost is about $136,000, equates to around $7,500 per residential equivalent unit. We had about $9,000 that we had estimated the assessment at the project hearing, so it's about a 16 percent reduction. All of the properties are one REUs, so they all have a $7,500 assessment cost. With that, I would recommend that you approve Special Assessment Improvement BA-361 for the attached assessment role in your packet.
Questions for Director Houle regarding this proposed special assessment? All right. We will open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify with regard to the proposed special assessment in the Interlochen Circle neighborhood? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing with regard to the Interlochen Circle neighborhood. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, we adopt improvement number BA-361 embodied in Resolution 2011-104. Roll call, please.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Next matter is Parkwood Knowles.
This is the final assessment hearing for the Parkwood Knowles Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. The Parkwood Knowles area is located on the westerly side of the city, off of Blake Road, between basically Schaefer Road and Blake Road. The final street cost, project cost that we had was $871,000. The final utility costs were $380,000, which is around 30 percent of the project. We had less utilities being upgraded. The sanitary sewer lines were in good condition, and the water lines were in good condition, so we essentially had a big improvements to the stormwater fund. The assessment cost is $871,000, which equates to $10,000 for residential equivalent unit. The estimated assessment was, during the project hearing, was $13,000, which is around an 18 percent reduction. The, there's a number of homes located off of Schaefer Avenue, or Schaefer Road, I should say, that had their side yards, that for the assessment policy is that it's a one-third assessment. The remainder of the properties are one REUs, so they're at $10,000. With that, I'd recommend that you approve Special Assessment BA-362 for the attached assessment role.
Member Bennett?
Yes, Director Houle, quick question. For the assessable units, it states 80.65. I understand there are five properties that are being assessed at one-third REU. Should that not be 80.66?
That is probably correct. Yep.
Will there be any resulting change in the math, or do all the numbers? Just wanted to make sure that we were voting on what we were supposed to vote on.
I believe on that Excel sheet that it's how you dial in the number of digits shown.
6 is in here. Okay. Okay. So it's then a typo then on the cover sheet, not on the assessment rules?
No, no, no. It is 65. No, but I listened.
Okay. So then it's both the assessment rules and the cover sheet?
Right. So the question is, does it affect the amounts specified in the assessment rule?
I don't, I don't believe that it would affect it, but I don't believe it would affect that great a dollar amount. But we can, actually...
It makes it $10.
It changes it to $10,808. So...
For the three?
For cost per REU. So...
Can we do a proposed assessment not to exceed $10,801?
It's a $133. $133 lower with 80.66.
I guess I'd have to refer to our city attorney if I should, if we should be relooking at this for continuation, or if we could make that change tonight.
You can make the changes tonight, and then notify the property owners of the changes after the close of the hearing.
Okay.
Because how many are impacted? How many? It's just...
There are 80.66 REUs rather than 80.65 REUs, so it's just the number divided by the other, the revised corrected divider.
Can we put it this way?
It would go down, so it would be a positive to the homeowners.
I don't even know how to calculate it. Oh, I see it. Okay.
What's your preference, Director Houle?
I would say that we'd make that correction and send out notices if you could approve it tonight, since it's going in the correct direction for the residents.
All right. We know our total roadway cost. We know our total REUs, so we can, we can make that sort of an assessment if it's approved, and then you can do the math on the individual parcels.
Correct. Yep. With our statements going out tomorrow, that would, we'll correct the statements before they go out the door.
Right. So it's not even, we're not even really talking about an extra mailing. We'll just, we could just make that correction in the mailing we were going to do anyway.
That's correct. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Houle. Any other questions or comments regarding this proposed matter from council? All right. Let's open this matter up as a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify or inquire with regard to this proposed special assessment for the Parkwood Knowles neighborhood? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed say nay. Carried. Now, with regard to the proposed Parkwood Knowles Neighborhood Reconstruction Assessment BA-362, which is embodied in 2011, Resolution 2011-105, do we have a motion to approve the total final roadway cost and the total assessment REUs and direct staff to prepare the appropriate notices and invoices to the residents in that neighborhood?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Which one are we on? Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we're moving on to the Interlochen Bluff Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. That is BA-374.
Yep. This is the final assessment hearing for roadway improvement BA-374, Interlochen Bluff Neighborhood Reconstruction. This is just located just to the east of Interlochen Circle, off of Interlochen Boulevard. The final project cost for the street portion is $74,000. The utility cost is $53,000, about 42 percent of the overall project costs. The, like I say, the assessment cost would be $74,000, which equates to $9,300 per residential equivalent unit, and the estimated assessment at the project hearing was $11,000 per REU, which is about a 17 percent reduction. All the homes would receive one REUs, an assessment cost $9,300 per home. With that, staff would recommend that you approve Special Assessment Improvement Number BA-374 for the attached assessment role.
Questions for Director Houle on this matter?
I do.
Member Brindle?
Director Houle, in this, in Interlochen Bluff, which is a cul-de-sac, there is a median.
Yes.
And there are some utilities in that median, and one of them is a, is a black pole that kind of looks like a flagpole. What is that pole?
What we have, Councilmember Brindle and Council, is down at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a landscape island that has a sanitary sewer lift station down at that, where all the homes off Interlochen Bluff drain down to that lift station. And that, it's actually an antenna that ties back or sends signals back to our SCADA system, so, to our computer systems, so we can monitor the operations of that lift station.
It's kind of tall.
It has, it has to be, because it's in a hole, essentially. So we had to get the height up high enough so that it could read, have a direct, almost in, not quite a direct line of sight, but at least get the radio waves to our towers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions by council for Director Houle on BA-374? All right. We're going to open this matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and testify or inquire regarding the proposed special assessment BA-374, which is the Interlochen Bluff neighborhood? Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion on BA-374 embodied in Resolution 2011-106?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Next is BA-375, which is the Broyer Road Neighborhood Reconstruction Project.
Yep. This is the final assessment hearing for the Broyer Road Reconstruction. Broyer Road is a cul-de-sac right off of Valley View Road, kind of nestled in the Braemar Hills neighborhood. The street reconstruction costs were $24,000. The utility costs were around $15,000, which is around 38 percent of the overall project costs. The assessment costs were $24,000, which equates down to $4,800 per REU. The estimated assessment, which was around $9,000 during the project hearing, this one we looked at as, that's quite a bit, quite a bit of a reduction, 46 percent from the project hearing. And one of the items, when you look at this type of project, is that we had a really large contingency going into it. Because any one quantity or unit, if the contractor put a lot of dollars on it, could drive up that assessment. So looking at our estimate, yeah, we probably could have been down a little bit on some of the inner prices, but we'd rather be a little safer than sorry. So with, oh. It's there. Anyway. You don't have one there, Jennifer?
Yeah. Use the controller.
Okay. Anyway, we, the assessment costs, all the homes on this, on Broyer Road are one REU, so $4,800 per home. And I'd recommend that you approve Special Assessment BA-375 for the attached assessment role.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Houle? All right. Let's open this up as a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify? Hearing no one and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion with regard to BA-375 embodied in Resolution 2011-107?
So moved.
All right. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
One final matter for proposed improvement in special assessment, Moccasin Valley Road.
You know what? I wonder if I'm out of memory on this. Okay. This is the final assessment hearing for, I put all these projects together on PowerPoint, so I probably ran out of memory. This is the final assessment hearing for roadway improvements, BA-376, which is the Moccasin Valley Road Neighborhood Reconstruction. Moccasin Valley is just to the north of Broyer Road, off of Valley View Road. The total street costs are $73,000. The total utility cost is around $45,000, which is about 38 percent of the project costs. The assessment cost is $73,000. The residential equivalent unit cost is $6,600. The estimated assessment was $11,000 at the project hearing, with about a 40.8 percent reduction. All the properties are, would receive one REU, so it'd be about $6,600 per REU. With that, staff would recommend that you approve Special Assessment BA-376 for the attached assessment role.
Any questions by council for Director Houle on the Moccasin Valley Road project? All right. Let's open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify or otherwise inquire with regard to this proposed special assessment in the Moccasin Valley Road neighborhood? Hearing no one and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved in second, we close the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. All right. Is there a motion on BA-376? Get some energy going here. See the finish line. All right. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye.
Thank you, Director Houle.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like just to say something, since we just rolled through about eight roadway reconstruction projects. I want to thank, I have Jack Sullivan in the audience tonight to answer any questions we might have had. Jack's been, if I didn't have Jack, we wouldn't have been able to do all these assessments along with his staff. And all the staff that we have, I'd like to say, not having anybody come up to testify on all these special assessments is just a great testament of the great job that they do and working with the residents to come up with the win-win solutions in a lot of cases. So just want to thank my staff and the engineering staff and all the consultants that we work with.
Member Brindle and then Member Swanson.
I just want to let you know that we have friends, I went through here and circled all the people I know in all the neighborhoods. And I have heard from someone in almost every one of these neighborhoods that the communication with staff has been clear, it's been on time, and they felt like they were well-informed and that their questions were answered on a day-to-day basis. Had a couple of them who just went out and said, no. He'd go out and visit with the contractors and say, well, now, what are you going to do here, and how are you going to do that? And the contractors were patient and just great communicators, so all I heard were good comments. So, thank you.
Member Swanson?
I told Director Houle this story quietly a couple weeks ago, but the Woodcrest neighborhood that's under construction, and it's still a mess over there, actually threw a lunch for their contractors a couple weeks ago, out in front, brought in pizzas and stuff to drink. I don't think that probably happens very often, so that's obviously very nice of constituents, but I think it's because you guys helped make the project go as smoothly as possible. And that one was a particularly messy, is a particularly messy area. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks.
We can't thank you enough. Member Sprague, go ahead.
Just, so we did eight projects last year that we're assessing this year. What's the schedule going forward? I mean, I'm grateful that we're replacing our infrastructure at a steady pace, because I know we kind of fell behind in decades past, and I think it's important for us to provide sound public infrastructure. So going forward, what is the schedule? I think, are we at five or six a year approximately?
We're, every year from here on out, as far as we can project, we're doing about the same amount of miles of roadways. These were a lot of small cul-de-sacs that we had, so we're not going to have eight projects. We'll probably have four or five projects a year. But we're projecting out to do that amount of work, and that's really about what our financial capacity and even staff capacity. Without adding staff, we're talking folks into raising our financial capacity.
And at what juncture do we kind of catch up on our schedule, so to speak? I know at one point you said that 50 percent of our roadways were at a level of needing replacement, so...
We probably would catch up about 20, 30 years out, somewhere in there.
Okay.
We have 250 miles of roadways. We do about five miles a year.
Perfect. Thank you.
One final bit of praise, I guess is a good way to say it, for you and your entire team. I'm hearing compliments all over the city this summer on the projects you're working on. The engagement of citizenry and sort of the customer service aspect of what you're doing is just phenomenal. not have a single resident come forward with a concern, with a comment, it's extraordinary. And so, thank you, Jack, and thank you, Wayne, and please express our appreciation to your entire team for the fabulous work they're doing for our town, not just this council, but everybody in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Director Wallen with one final public hearing tonight, and that is a proposed certification of delinquent utilities, which we have periodically have
Thank you. Tonight is, Mayor and council, tonight we're looking at a public hearing on certification of delinquent utilities. Under Minnesota Statute 444.075, it allows cities to charge against the owner or less the occupant or all of them, and may provide a covenant for certifying unpaid charges to the county auditor with taxes against the property served for collection as other taxes are collected. The city code sections 1100, 1110, and 716 all provide for certification of delinquent accounts. If payments are not received within the time period provided in the notice, or if a resolution of delinquent bill is not reached, the city may certify delinquent balance to the county auditor. Utility accounts were, with balances over fifty dollars and delinquent thirty days or longer, were notified in writing of the pending certification and the date of the hearing. That notice went out just a little over a month ago, mid-September. It takes a couple of weeks for all of that to go through, so the actual date of the delinquent accounts is towards the end of August or first part of September. Customers will continue to have opportunity to pay the overdue balance up until November 18th. The reason November 18th is to allow approximately a week for us to find any NSAB checks that would have come in towards that end. A thirty-dollar administrative fee will be added to delinquent accounts. Certified amounts will pay an interest rate of six-and-a-half percent and all are one-year assessments. This delinquent list includes nine properties that receive St. Louis Park utility service and one property that receives Richfield utility services but are located in Edina and pursuant agreements with both St. Louis Park and Richfield are included for certification. On the other end of that, Richfield, we have a utility customer that is within the city of Richfield, that the city of Richfield will be certifying for the city of Edina, again according to that agreement. Amounts to be certified with this resolution also do not include, in May 3, 2011, Resolution 2011 adopted for certifying against three properties, one very large property, two properties just over two thousand dollars. That hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-thirty-seven dollars is not included within this resolution. That resolution has already been adopted and is waiting to be certified to the county. It also is not included in the list that's attached to the resolution. The final delinquent list will be attached to this Resolution 2011-109 and sent to the county for certification. Again, in September, six-hundred-seventy-six properties were notified of their delinquent balance totaling three-hundred-fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-fifty-four dollars. To compare, in 2010, seven-hundred-and-four properties were notified with a total balance of five-hundred-three-thousand-five-thirty. The final certification of that was three-hundred-and-sixteen properties for three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, five-hundred-twenty-three, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-three dollars. Again, in 2009, seven-hundred-and-twenty-one properties received notices totaling five-hundred-four-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-one dollars, with three-hundred-and-sixty-five properties and a total of three-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-thirty-nine being certified to the county. Recommendation, adopt Resolution 2011-109 certifying this year's delinquent utility bills to the Hennepin County Auditor for collection with the 2012 property taxes. And with that, if I could take any questions.
Questions for Director Wallen. Member Swenson? Then Member Brindle.
The three that we've previously certified, one of those is the largest one. Have we received the first of the payments as to our agreement on that one?
We have received those payments. That name is not included in the list. They did receive a letter stating that they owed, that they were delinquent on twenty-six thousand dollars. That was the delinquent balance, again, at that end of August versus September. They were, again, they were delinquent twenty-six thousand. That amount has been paid plus some, so they are not included in this certification.
No, but have they, for what they've paid, have they kept up with the agreement that we?
They have kept up with the agreement, yes.
Thank you.
Member Brindle.
So, if we look at this, using last year as an example, seven-hundred-and-forty, seven-hundred-and-four properties were notified, and evidently, since three-hundred-and-sixteen properties were certified, that means the others paid in that period of time? What is that period of time?
The period of time would be that when the letters go out in September, approximately one month ago, and upon final certification, the end of November.
Okay. All right. Do we have any idea how many of these are residential, how many of these are commercial, and why we end up with three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars of water bills that aren't paid?
This is predominantly residential. There are a couple of, and I've looked through, and I've just seen really a couple of commercial properties within there. There can be a number of reasons why, we've always certified, there's always a balance that of people who haven't paid, can't pay, you know, or this is their means of paying.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Got one question for you too, John. Curious about our collection rate, and what percent of our delinquencies are paid within one year after being certified to the county?
We probably collect, I would say, ninety percent on the first year, eighty-five to ninety percent. If there's one delinquency that comes in year after year, it's the utility certification. So, you will see, you know, delinquent payments coming in for utility certifications that happened three, four, or five years ago.
Good, it's good to know. All right, other questions for Director Wallen? Is this, all right, let's open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to testify or inquire regarding this proposed certification of delinquent utilities? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Moved in second, and we close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carry. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt Resolution 2011-109 certifying certain delinquent utilities to the county. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hublin.
Aye. Well, thank you, everyone. It's always good to get through these special assessments every year. Now, we have a resolution, excuse me, community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? We invite you to come forward and share new issues or concerns that you may have. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Bill Glahn, G-L-A-H-N, and I live at 6634 Normandale Road. You may recall, I addressed you a few weeks ago, actually a couple of months ago, on another subject, but tonight I wanted to talk about the Green Step Cities program. And a little bit of background very quickly, as you may recall, I worked for Governor Palenti as his Director of Energy Security. Currently, I serve as a member of the working group, the Energy Working Group of the Energy and Environment Commission. And in my work for Governor Palenti, my agency participated as one of the member agencies in the Green Steps program, so I had an occasion to attend many of their steering committee meetings, and I took the occasion a couple of weeks ago to attend their most recent meeting. And I want to share a couple of concerns I have with the program and tie it back to how it impacts the city of Edina as members, participants in the program. First of all, it's a PCA program. It styles itself as a program of the Pollution Control Agency. In fact, there is no specific statutory authorization for the program. It's a program they've taken on under their general authority to promote environmental improvement in the state, and they've created this governance entity that's neither fish nor fowl. It has a steering committee of seven members, most of which are not representing any government entity, but represent private nonprofit entities. So, the reason I'm standing up here is, as items come in front of you related to Green Step Cities, I want you to exercise more than your usual degree of skepticism as they come in front of you, because despite the presentation of issues as perhaps, or the implication of issues as perhaps being thoroughly vetted in science or the subject of rigorous analysis, in my experience, as often as not, they just reflect the policy preferences of the nonprofit members, which constitute the majority of the steering committee. So, as items come in front of you and you're deliberating whether the city of Edina will adopt a specific Green Step Cities project or best practice, I'd urge you to use your questions and your inquiries to provide the due diligence, which I fear has not been otherwise provided in the Green Step Cities process. A lot of projects, as I mentioned, a lot of this stuff just got thrown in the hopper and really hasn't been subject to real scientific or analytical scrutiny. And I encourage you that don't assume that when it gets in front of you, it's been thoroughly vetted. And the other issue that I wanted to touch on was the voluntary nature of this. I brought this up to the steering committee, because it's been implied that many of these steps are being put forward as mandated by Green Steps or mandated by the PCA, and they assure me there is no such thing. The program is completely voluntary, and that you have become members of it doesn't mean that you signed up specifically for any one measure or all the measures. You still have within your discretion the ability to decide whether or not you're going to participate case by case. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Glahn. All right. Anyone else? Mr. O'Connell.
My name is Raymond E. O'Connell. I live at 4612 Valley View Road. I've resided there for forty-five years. What I would like to bring up this evening, we've got this whole trail business and path business, because we've got so many people here in Edina that love to exercise. We've got a natural path around the perimeter of Braemer Park, which needs updating. The Nine Mile Creek has already approved boardwalks, and the part that is, the problem, there's two parts of it. On the north side, when you're going down to the west at the corner there, where you turn north to go up towards the gun range and so forth, that's really a bad corner. There's just several spots that need to offer greater protection to the people that are utilizing the walking areas. And all I wanted to do tonight is, because this has been going on, it existed when we first brought the property back in 1962, and they've always talked about finishing this trail, and the people around there have asked, you know, how to improve it. And all I'm suggesting tonight is that you just take a good look at it, and when I was on the park board in 2005, it was a subject there, and it continued to be a subject casually reflecting some of the things that could be done, but nothing has happened. And so, all I'm doing tonight is to try to energize, at least have somebody take a look at it from an official position and get this thing started, because with the attitude of the Nine Mile Creek in the 2013 program with the bicycle trails and so forth, they've approved boardwalks. And we need probably somewhere between two-hundred-and, two-hundred-and-fifty yards of boardwalks on the south side, and they would be high enough so you wouldn't have to be concerned, because we've talked about flotation devices, but that's just impossible. But boardwalks would work. But then we got the most beautiful trail, then you go up to the escher that borders on Gleason, it's just beautiful up there. We've got a great horn owl that nests up there. And the part that's so neat is because you're away from the city. You can hardly hear 494 down in there. And it is not just for good weather, it's year-round, because people use it for a skiing trail also. So, I just wanted to present this information to you and get it activated. So, I thank you very, very much. If I can just do one aside, in 2008, Ashcroft, that border, that face Valley View Road, Ashcroft was done from Valley View Road out to fifty, back to 58th on the north. That was the most beautiful job, and when I was seeing the figures tonight, was I ever lucky, because I got a hundred-and-twenty-five feet on that one side. And I was able to pay it off in November of 2008, and it's just been a beautiful job. And I continue to look at the job that is being done, the existing ones here. We are really getting beautifully smooth roads and well-done. Thank you very much.
Before you depart, Mr. O'Connell, I heard a rumor this summer that you shot a score at golf that was better than your age.
Well, it's easier now, because I'm fast approaching.
I know, I know, you didn't shoot sixty-six.
Well, I'm fast approaching ninety. I'll be ninety in next June, so I play twice a week, and I'm just blessed by the dear Lord that I still have the energy and the ability to walk. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Ray.
And I'm so happy that the presentation tonight, and what Wayne did and Mr. Wallen did, was really great.
All right, thanks, Ray.
Another education. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And on Resolution 2011-110, accepting various donations, we have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and we adopt Resolution 2011-110. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carry. Donations this reporting period are to the Braemer Memorial Fund for golf course equipment purchases, and then to the Edina Park Department. We should note a significant gift by the Edina Chamber of Commerce. We had Ari here earlier, we should have mentioned it to her. For trees, plants, landscaping, and a park bench on the city hall grounds, a total contribution near five thousand dollars, four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-one dollars. So, thanks to the Edina Chamber for that gift.
This is in honor of an anniversary of the Chamber, and I forget how many years it is, forty, it's their, thank you, that's what I was going to say, I was afraid it was wrong, their fortieth anniversary. So, that is the focus of the gift, and to put something that's lasting and sustaining in our community from them is terrific.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, the other matter in reports and recommendations is the proposed receipt of the business plans involving Braemer Arena, the golf course, and the Edina Arts Center. Is there a motion relative to that matter?
So move. Second.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the receipt of the 2010 and 11, 2010-11 enterprise business plans for Braemer Arena, the Braemer Golf Course, and Edina Arts Center. Discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carry. And we discussed these for a couple hours upstairs in conjunction with some budget work, so they got a good vetting up in our work session.
And, Mayor, Your Honor, just to note that those work sessions, which are usually held at 5:00 or 5:30, are open to residents and notice of them is provided with other public meetings, so people are always welcome to come and listen to the discussions.
Thank you for making that comment. We've got some correspondence and petitions for each of the council members on the dais. Anything else other than what we've been provided? All right. Council comments, let's start with Member Sprague this week.
Thank you, Your Honor. We received some correspondence from John Cashmore from the Human Rights and Relations Commission about an idea that, I'm not exactly sure where it came from, but to hold some type of Heritage Day or International Day or something to celebrate our diversity. And the note asks us to give some direction on where to go with that, and I guess, I don't know that we have it in the budget for next year, but I kind of envision that as a separate event onto itself. I think the subject is worthy. I think the subject is worthy enough of celebration, given the demographic changes in Edina and the new communities, that we should do this event, do some outreach, and, and celebrate our various cultural backgrounds. So I would entertain some discussion from the rest of the council.
Sure. Member Swenson, and then Member Bennett.
I see you're not back already. In my laudable that, that we would do it, but in my experience, Edina takes a while to embrace new things, and so my recommendation, since we had already gone through the majority of our budget, budgeting for two thousand and twelve, was to see if we could make it a, a part of the Fourth of July parade. I thought that was appropriate. I don't know, you know, Member Brindle, how you feel about that, because you're very intricate in that planning. But I, what I didn't want it to do was be an event that was poorly attended, just because it's the first time around, and I know that, you know, we've tried a number of different things, including even a bike ride. And it's hard to get something started and off the ground. So I thought maybe if we piggyback for both financial sake and for visibility, we have a lot of people along a parade route that would see this, that was my recommendation.
Well, with regard to that, as far as the parade is concerned, they do have a theme every year, and so could certainly send this as a recommendation, and have Mr. Cashmore talk to the parade committee itself, and make his pitch, because that's, I mean, that's an audience of about twenty thousand people. So that'd be a great, a great way to embrace it.
It's really visible.
Yeah, it's very visible. And it, and a theme is sometimes hard to come by, and hard to think about a good theme. So, so it's certainly something that can be communicated.
Uh, Member Bennett.
If I may, the Community Education Services Board, last Thursday at its meeting, saw a presentation of census data analysis that addresses some of what we're talking about tonight. And I forwarded it to Manager Neil this morning, and would request that be sent to different council members. It's just one picture of what is happening in the community, but there is, as well as a slightly growing population, an enormously growing amount of diversity. We also have a new Hindu temple in the city, and I would think that they would be a good, not necessarily, well, a partner, one of the community partners in something like this, and possibly also Edina Resource Center, which is the same public funding, so has its limits, but certainly has connections in different communities. So I think the idea is, is a worthy one. I think it's been challenged in the past. I know that Member Brindle and others with the Human Rights and Relations Commission, and I think through the school district, have worked in the past. But poss, but I, I like the idea of partnering it with something that's a very visible community celebration, and then also the idea of using the time that we have now to reach out to those other partners in the community, and to build it into something that would be visible and successful and fun for people.
Here's another thought that I had when I saw that email today, and that was getting the Edina Community Foundation involved, and let them visit with the Human Rights and Relations Commission, and, and see if we can come up with some kind of a theming, or let, you know, celebrate this diversity, and let them take a lead on this. And I think we, that might be another way to, to help create something. I think Member Swenson's concerns are, are very real. That's a, that's a good way to start, now that we're so deep in the budget process, we really can't do anything about it, but the Edina Community Foundation could. So I did send that over to Dick Crockett, and asked him to take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I personally, I, I don't, you know, if it were, if it were themed with the Fourth of July, that would just be one year. I almost see it being developed as a separate event onto itself. And I didn't envision it for next year because of the budget processes over. I thought if we could give clear direction to HRC, that this is something we'd like to explore even into two thousand and thirteen, then let's start to, to develop the, the model and the partnerships, and then we can roll it out later. But at least they have clear direction from us that, yes, we are interested in pursuing this type of event. So that seems to be the consensus among us, however it's executed.
I agree.
Okay. Second thing, on Seventieth Street, the construction will be done, we pray, by mid-November at the latest. But I think with the new features on the street, that we should have a policing plan that is, is more aggressive in the beginning of the new street. We have a, a new twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, we've got new stoplights that are sequenced to slow people down, and so on. But if we really want to change behavior on that road, we've had six months of people being off that road, using other routes. Let's retrain them, the minute they get back on that road, that this is going to be a street that will allow you to have continuous flow, but it's going to be civil. And pedestrians are going to be welcomed to cross and to, and to interact with the street as well. And so I think that, that retraining needs to happen early in the process, I guess is what I'm saying.
Councilmember Sprague, we'll, we'll do that, I'll talk to our law enforcement folks, not only in Seventieth, but on Forty-Fourth Street also. With the smooth pavement, people have a tendency to go faster, so we'll, we'll be hitting both of those early on.
Perfect, that's all I got.
Speed bump.
Member Swenson, go ahead.
The rental speed bump, that my husband keeps hurrying me about, because he hates speed bumps, but I actually kind of like it. How has that worked, and how do we feel about using it?
Councilmember Swenson, and council, that, that's the temporary speed bump on Sunnyside, is what you're referring to, it's worked quite well. It's going to be hard to get it out of there. The residents really, really like it, it's slowed down the speed in that area. We have taken some numbers, I don't know exactly what, what the, the readings are as far as speeds, speed goes on, on that, but our goal is to have a policy in front of the Transportation Commission on how to apply that temporary speed bump, and where do we apply it, because as well, it can imagine, and a lot of folks will be asking for it in the future. It is kind of spendy, it's around five thousand dollars per speed bump, for, for a temporary one, but as, as you agreed with me, it was needed on Sunnyside at the time, so.
Okay, just curious, I'm going to speak for all of us, but anyone can add in. Last Tuesday, we were all at a kickoff of a new effort called the Greater MSP, which is a consortium of public realm, and that would be the us part of it, and local companies to market our thirteen-county area, to bring in new business, to locate within the thirteen-county area, and to attempt to expand businesses. And it was, it's really a cool thing. We signed on to this a year ago. It was, it grew out of a group called the Itasca Group, and it was fun for us all to be there, because we had signed on early. So when we saw the cities that had done it, and the cities that were missing off the list that hadn't, it was sort of interesting. But the plan in the future is that there will be a huge marketing to create some buzz about our under-talked-about area. And, and I think the word is prosper. If you move here, you can prosper.
I think we were the only council to have all five members present.
That would also be true.
Which is not surprising, you know, we, we worked together as a team, but that was, that was very encouraging to see us all there and dedicated to the subject. And also, there was free sushi, although I didn't have any, because Joni and I were too busy talking to people, but great event.
That's all I have.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Joni.
Following up on the brief discussion about the temporary speed hump, glad to hear that policy will be going in front of the ETC policy recommendation. And I have mentioned in past meetings that it might be time to at least ask for a review of the NTMP, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, by the ETC, and to see what recommendations they have for either its use, revision, or elimination. The policy, I think, was adopted by the council in April two thousand and five. I was not yet a council member. I don't think it has ever been employed. It does set forward a, I think, workable system of notice, and measurement, and evaluation, and ultimate decision-making, and it also sets up a payment, or the people who request it ultimately pay for what is requested, if it's determined to be necessary and effective. And it, it may again be time to not have that policy, but if we have the policy and we're not using it at all, and it had, never has been used, then I think the question is, is it serving us? What happened to those principles? Do they get folded into something else? Or do we just try to make, try to make use of it? I know that we see traffic concerns coming forward from neighborhoods, so maybe employing it on smaller projects might be a very good way to go. And it's possible also that it would have some application to temporary, as well as permanent installations. Following the same board and commission question, I understand that Assistant Manager Karen Kurt has been working on standardizing model bylaws for boards and commissions, and I wonder if we know a timeline approximately on that.
Actually, the staff liaisons have all gathered together, and we've put together, I'll call as a kind of a rough draft of potentially some, some model bylaws. And I've been going around this month and visiting with each of the boards and commissions to tell them a little bit about the project and what's coming. So the next goal, hopefully during the month of November, is to pull together a representative from each of the boards and commissions, to gather, give some more feedback, and then hopefully, at that point, we can make some further updates, and then send it out to the boards and commissions, for them to take a look at it. And there's some areas within the bylaws that are flexible, and they can make modifications that would meet their needs.
What are we anticipating for boards and commissions that already have bylaws, such as the Heritage Preservation Board, the Planning Commission, and the Energy and Environment Commission?
It's, it's my hope, actually, that we, we kind of pulled the best of all the sample, all the boards and commissions bylaws that we had. And so I think that the majority of the boards and commissions will find that the, the template we've developed will probably be very workable, especially since there's a lot of areas in which we can be flexible to meet specific board and commission needs. The one exception to that is probably the Planning Commission, because of the nature of their work and the quasi-judicial function that they perform, that they probably need some additional detail in their bylaws that the other boards and commissions do not need. So what I've signaled to them is that they can take a look at the model and incorporate as they see fit into, to their current bylaws.
So for the, for the process of adoption, we would rescind all current bylaws, and then adopt all the new bylaws that incorporate our minimum standards with their flexible elective standards?
Correct. So it'd be my hope to bring them together as a package really next year.
Okay. And specifically, I understand that the ETC adopted bylaws, but pending the release or implementation of the model bylaws, has not sent those bylaws to the council for review. So in terms of creating work committees to address some of their concerns, like the living streets, I think they're, are concerned in, as to what they should be doing at this point. Were their bylaws to have been undergone council approval, they would have the ability to simply approve those committees or working groups on their own. So at this point, I think we just advise them to send that request for a commission or committee to us?
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna have to wait, like everybody else, for the right result, which we're willing to wait for.
Great. And then I have another board and commission-related question, and that is that we received some correspondence relating to the Browndale Park, and to a neighborhood group that apparently is doing some maintenance and some subsidy or support of that park. And I would like to ask that that be referred to the park board for discussion, and come back to us with some kind of recommendation.
That's a good suggestion. Make that in form of a motion.
I, I so move.
All right. And encompass within that motion, would you also want the park board to look at that fencing issue that has been raised?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Can, can you give me some background again on that?
There was correspondence in the packet for this meeting, from a couple of residents who live near Browndale Park, and they were concerned about a fence that was, I think, erected by the city. I think that the fence has been, the purpose of the fence, I think, is safety.
Aesthetically unpleasing, okay, got it.
There's a question of height, and I think there's also a question of function. And then I think the communication, I think one of the issues that I know that going forward with what work Assistant Manager Kurt is doing with neighborhood entities, that this is something where we would anticipate or desire to have a line of communication, where if, if there is a group that is in relationship with the city for the support of a park, possibly they would, well, they would be receiving notice in advance of something, so that the discussion and correspondence would be in advance of any kind of implementation, rather than concerns raised after something being implemented.
Member Swenson.
Yep, I'm comfortable sending it back for review, as long as, you know, if we were notified of a danger and we put up a fence, because it's a, that's a liability issue, guys, and I, I'm uncomfortable sending it back with the idea that the fence is going to go away if we've been warned that there's a danger. So as long as the understanding isn't that that's what we're doing, and Manager Neil, I can see your pen is up, does that mean you have something to say?
Well, it was not only of a potential danger, it was response to an actual accident.
Right, okay.
And, so, so there could, however, there could be a better way to resolve that same problem.
And there might be, and I, and I get that, and I'm sure he would just at least appreciate that we looked it over and gave him a response.
Yes.
Even if it ends up ultimately coming from Roger, but.
And I don't make a motion with a desired outcome. What I think is that we can learn from this, I know that there is a committee of the park board that's looking at donations policies, it would seem that this would be something that would fit under that consideration. When, when someone donates money toward a public, toward a park or a park resource, what does that entitle them to? I know that Manager Neil in, in his previous city had a contract that people who donated entered into, and so it was very clear what the rights and responsibilities were of people who donated. And that's the kind of learning, as well as communication, that I'm looking for in this.
That's what you're looking for, then I can support it, as long as you're not looking for.
Removal of the fence.
Removal of the fence.
So I also thought the issue that they raised of whether or not we were communicating effectively with the park associations, I mean, they go through the effort of establishing a formal park association, and then things occur in that park without them having any input. I thought that was a legitimate issue, too. I'd like to have the park board look at that as well.
What, what, what is the desired role of park associations in the city? What fits within the necessary health and safety controls of the city? And again, I think that clarity of going into a relationship is really important.
All right, good. Any further discussion or comment relative to this motion? All right, all those, I think Mary did, Mary's second?
Yeah.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A opposed say nay. Carried. I, I would just comment that this one seemed, I seemed to be comfortable with handling it, because we had prior correspondence on it, but this time of the night, in concerns of council and the mayor, it's hard to take on these topics on a first-time basis, and then having a motion passed. And, and I think it kind of backfired on us a little bit on the arts center, without, you know, our, our intention of going forward and getting this thing moving as quickly as possible, which made sense to me, maybe could have been handled a little bit differently from a process standpoint, and I think it might have been better if staff had kind of paved the way. So I, I just say that as a cautionary remark, that getting involved in making motions at this time of the evening, or at this portion of the agenda, I guess is a better way to put it, is something we ought to be cautious about. Okay, do you want to continue, Member Bennett?
That was, that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Member Brindle?
Thanks for your comment on, on the, on the motions during comments. I appreciate that. I have one item of business, and that is during our consent agenda tonight, item four C is the list of dates, and I would recommend that we send this back to staff for an adjustment. I think that the update that was provided tonight was provided in order to add Election Day to, to the list of the- Day to, to the list of the council meeting dates and that adjustment. But, but it is incorrect for 2012. So need to have...
Incorrect in what way, do you think?
Well, Election Day in 2012 is March, is November 6th. Election Day in 2012 is November 6th, the first Tuesday in November in 2012.
So we're meeting on the 5th.
So we meet on the 5th.
The 5th was on the chart. I just charted it out in my calendar.
Well, what we received tonight, it was on the dials tonight.
Yep. Here. It's right here. This is right here.
Oh, she's saying that these data are on the dials.
The date, the date, instead of Monday, November, instead of Monday, November 5th, it should be Monday, Novem, I'm sort of, instead of Monday, November 1st, the council meeting should be on Monday, November 5th.
Oh, I went by the chart. The chart is correct.
The chart is correct. This, yeah. The chart is correct. And this is, I saw this and went, because it's item 4C for tonight. And, and so it was a replacement for the orange sheet. And so that's, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because we did approve it, but we approved it with an incorrect date, and I just want to make sure we get the right date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you, the, the correct date is noted, Member Brendel? If you would like me to put it back on the agenda for the first, I could do so?
No. No, that's fine. It's just as long as it gets on our calendar and is in the official calendar of the city, that's all that really matters to me.
Why don't we just, I mean, this is a housekeeping matter. Why don't we just make a motion to correct the 2012 council meeting dates and holidays?
Okay.
By, by designating Monday, November 5th, 2012 as the...
Council meeting.
Date for the council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Are you voting?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie.
Um, let's see. Couple other things. There has been some pavement activity in Indian Hills. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And some of the, some of the hills will, will end up with some, some roughness on the road where the pavement has broken away or worn away. And on the hilly roads, as you are walking, and the drivers come around, and they're avoiding that rough part of the road, and there you are taking your evening walk, it can be dangerous. So I appreciate staying on top of that. Sunday, October 9th, since our last council meeting, we hosted Tour de Edina, and the city was one of the partners, along with the school district. And Bike Edina Task Force, let me see if I can think of all of them, Edina Morningside Rotary Club, and Alina Hospitals and Clinics. And we had about 165 riders, and we rode a five mile route in the Indian Hills Braemar area. And all we've received have been just positive comments on how much fun it was. So we are collecting our thoughts on the wrap up and how we want to move forward. There will be an additional five mile loop added next year. So it'll be a 10 mile ride next year. And ultimately, over time, it'll be a 20 mile Tour de Edina that touches every corner of Edina. So proceeds from, and everybody paid $5 a person, or if they registered the day of, then it was $10 a person. But the proceeds went to fight hunger in our community, in our broader community, to veep and to feed my starving children. So thank you to all the riders. Thanks to all the residents that came out and cheered. And we look forward to a lot more fun as we go forward with this. It looks like, looks like it was really an event that the community will get behind. That's, oh, and I loved seeing the sketch, the sketches of Southdale in the Edina Sun Current. I'm very excited about that. Pat Mylan, who is a neighbor of ours, asked me if I'd heard the rumor about Southdale. And I said, what's that? And he said, that it's closing. And I said, ah, no, I didn't. That means we, we're not doing a good enough job. So I'm very happy to see them come out with a new look, and I'm excited. Lori Van Dalen has done some wonderful things in, in her past in the other malls that she's been charged with, and so I expect some great things here. And you are going to talk about Dewtown, so I'll let you do that. Right?
Okay. I can, but you can certainly comment on it as well.
Okay. Well, Mayor Hovland and I have been working on, on a, a healthy communities initiative called Dewtown. And basically, the purpose, the aim of Dewtown is to make it easy to be active, to make it easy to be healthy, to remove the barriers that stand between us and the decisions we make on how active we are and what we eat and how healthy we live our lives. So Tour de Edina was certainly part of Dewtown. They were onsite and active. And thank you to Grassroots Solutions for making that happen. And so, but Dewtown is, I mean, it, it was kicked off on September 27th with great fun and the Do Groove guy and Mayor Hovland learning some new steps. And, and I love the movie camera. That's my favorite one so far. I, I can do the movie camera. So, thank you so much.
All right. Back to Tour de Edina quickly. They asked Councilmember Brendel, Councilmember Swenson, and me to lead off the bike tour, but it didn't take long for Ed McColda from the Park and Rec to be actually leading the bike race, or whatever you want to call it.
He was wearing clothing on, too.
Yeah. So Ed, Ed and this, I didn't get the young guy's name, little nine year old, Ed and this furiously, furiously pumping nine year old on his bicycle led the way, and that little guy hung in there all the way to the end, up towards the front. And Ed kind of monitoring him, so he didn't go through those intersections without looking. Anyway, it was nice to have Ed kind of leading the way on it, and it was a great event. A lot of kids and moms. It was, it was fun.
It was fun. And speaking of young kids, we have a mascot. Josh is four years old. Rode a bicycle with tires about that big around, and he rode the whole, one speed, coaster brakes, rode the whole route. The hills on 70th Street, the whole thing.
That's impressive.
It is impressive. He's our mascot.
All right. Good. Well, back up a little bit in time, on the 5th of October, and this is directed toward Mr. Hool sitting over there. I had breakfast with Gene Hugland, one of the property owners down at 50th and France, and they have this, there's a small group of the property owners down there that have a continuing concern over the adequacy of our parking. And I just wanted to check with you, Director Hool, to see where we were on some of the assessments that are taking place. I know there's a, a desire on the part of some of those property owners to expand that middle ramp by a couple of levels, and I don't know if that's possible from a structural engineering standpoint. And they said you were looking at that issue, and I just thought I'd check in with you on that.
Yep. Mayor and council, we're, I've been working with the 50th and France Owners Association for the last couple of years to come up with some solution as far as our parking and streetscapes and keep, keep the corner up, basically. And, and so we're still looking at the feasibility of some additions to the ramps or modifications to the ramps, and not only levels, but elevators, those types of things to make it more accessible to the, to the general public, along with doing things to the, to the streetscapes, to the, the trees, irrigating the trees, replacing pavers and things like that. So we're hoping to have this fairly close to a feasibility report in the next month or so. And I'm thinking if, if we can squeeze it in in, in December, January, that we would do a workshop with the council to go through what we've learned to date. They want to move, if we go forward with, with what they'd like to do, they want to move really quickly on it. So we'd be looking at if we did go forward, that we would be doing something possibly next summer, coming out of the, of the frost season.
We've got a workshop tentatively set for the December 20th workshop or work session. That would be where we'd have that discussion. Good. I like, I like hearing it, we're moving it forward, because it is a concern. I think we're all...
And will they be, is it kind of the workshop typically made?
Yep. I've, I've spoken to a number of them that, that, yeah, they, they need to be right involved with it all along and, and be right at the table.
And like, just at the table and not at the side, if that's...
That's a nice suggestion. Thank you. The 5th was also International Bike Walk to School Day, and Dewtown got involved in that, asked me to be over at Creek Valley. So that was, that was an interesting experience with all the kids over there. And then that was also the day we had Southwest LRT Management Committee meeting. You know, we're going into preliminary engineering, I think I mentioned that before. Over the next two years, it'll be, we've actually got a project to work on. So that's, that's a great thing. Again, I remind folks, two problems that we need to solve. One's the freight diversion issue up in St. Louis Park and sustainable funding for operating Southwest LRT. We got to get some legislative help on that. We've got to get the legislature engaged and come up with some long-term funding, or FTA probably won't let us go and do final engineering, final design. On the 6th, there were, there was a trade delegation here from Bahrain, and it was quite interesting. Went to a breakfast meeting. The team was led by a member of the royal family named Sheikh Mohammed, educated in the United States, very well spoken. Addressed some of the Arab Spring issues as it affected Bahrain, tried to explain, I think in his way, what had happened in Bahrain. And it wasn't as well attended as I, I thought it might be, and I think what happened in Bahrain had a lot to do with it. Nonetheless, it's, they're making an effort to go around the world, I think, and, and explain their perspective on what happened, and trying to be more transparent, trying to be more democratic. And so I thought it was worthwhile from that point, at that standpoint, to, to participate in that meeting. And I also got a perspective from another fellow there who runs the, what they call the Office Park, was an Irishman who had an interesting perspective on it as well. That night, this was interesting, I was invited by our own Dr. Adnan Qareshi, who's head of stroke intervention at the U, who's on our health committee. He has helped start what's called the International Congress of Interventional Neurology. And they had a dinner that same night on the 6th, and they asked me to come over and give me, give them a greeting from all over the world. So Mayor Redina gave these folks from all over the world a greeting, welcoming into And it was real interesting to visit some of these folks from, from France, from Saudi Arabia, many doctors from Pakistan, just some extraordinarily bright people. On the 7th, we had, we continued this work on the mileage based user fees. We're working our way towards a report and some recommendations for the Commissioner of Transportation. That'll occur over the next couple of months. I mentioned Tour de Edina. And then on the 10th, Regional Council of Mayors, we had a visit from Thomas Murphy, who's a former mayor of Pittsburgh, three, three term mayor of Pittsburgh, who helped with a lot of the turnaround in Pittsburgh from the old steel city and the decaying infrastructure that they had into, into the modern city that they are. So that was interesting to see him and listen to him talk about that transfer, transformation. On the 11th, when we all went to the Greater MSP rollout, I can't tell you how good I felt and how proud I was that our whole council was there. I just about fell over when I looked around afterwards, and I saw Joni and Josh, and, and Anne was there, Mary was there. I mean, it was just fantastic. I know, as Josh said, we were the only council in the metro that had everybody on their council there, and it was really something to be proud of. And I crowed about that quite a bit at, at the reception upstairs. So thank you all for coming, and that, that final video was quite a fine piece of work done in part by Pat Mylan from Edina.
Done a lot by Pat Mylan.
And...
Yeah. It's a formative video. Would you like to show it in person?
Yeah, it's, it's a fantastic video. So I think we, yeah, if you've got it, let's show it.
Number one. Number one. Number one.
Number one, number one, number one.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Wow, not one winter shot. Amazing. Also, they should have closed with a shot of the 50th in France, the Edina Theater. I think that would have been a much better ending, myself, but.
Well, I think I can comfortably say that we did a lot of work during the recession getting ourselves organized. And we're going to be, I expect us to really roll now on economic development, and to be quite successful at attraction, retention, and growth of jobs.
And one of the most encouraging things about the presentation that evening was the assurance of measurable results, that this effort would yield.
Well, thanks for showing that. I think it's, nice people can see it. We had other meetings, transportation related meetings in the last week or so, 494, 169. And then Saturday was Edina Day of Service, and I was able to get my usual spot for highway cleanup right down below City Hall here. I like to clean up right below City Hall. And I got two of my grandkids and my daughter out there with me, and we had a great time. And then I took them to breakfast afterwards. So, and then Monday morning, Scott and I had breakfast with Kevin Staunton, who's leading the Small Area Plan Study Group over at, in the Grandview District, and we talked a bit about the direction they were going, and got a good update from him. And then two other final things quickly. I got an email today that Pittsburgh Blue is now open in the Galleria, which is another parasoli group restaurant, is his salute in Motzamia. So thanks to them for liking Edina so much as a place for the restaurant business. This is their third opening in Edina. And then finally, Jennifer, I got a great handwritten note from Bob Solheim over at NC Little Hospice about, about the contribution to NC Little Hospice. So the note basically telling us what a skilled team we had here on our staff, and that all of us on the council should be very proud of our staff, and we are. So thanks for doing such a great job. So that's it for me, and on to Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of things to share with you tonight. The first thing I'll pass down to you is something that you have asked for, and you've, I think, been looking forward to receiving. And this is some flow charts that describe how, how you go through, or how a project is processed by, by the city. There's a discussion about how a variance is processed, how a project is processed. And, and the last page of this is also something you've been looking forward to, and that is the, what we would call maybe the construction management protocol, or code of conduct sort of document. So I'm passing these out to you tonight, so you have a chance to look them over. They're not in final format, so we can take your comments. You know, so give them the look, give them a look of, of the elected official that hears from people, and, and let us know how we can make them better. Sometimes when, when, when we're working on these things, we get in city wonk mode, and we, we really need to hear some feedback from you. And Carrie Teague is, is really the person most responsible for these, and Jennifer and her staff are going to be working on them to get them into final format. But I'd like you to take a look at those. The next thing I'm going to hand to you is a little thicker than that. It is the, what I call the long, sorry, is called the Long Form Quality of Life Survey Document. This document is really the same thing that you've already seen, except that it adds the, the correlation note, notes, and it also provides you some, some greater narrative in, in some of them. Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We will PDF this and make it available to everyone. But this is your own, very own paper copy that you can enjoy, too. All right, a couple of updates. The Grandview, the mayor mentioned the Grandview Small Area Planning Process. They have a busy week next week with meetings on the 25th, 26th, and 27th. The one that I'll particularly point out to the council is the one that occurs on Thursday, October 27th, at the Senior Center, at six o'clock that night. That's sort of the culmination of their process. It's a public meeting, open house, starts at six o'clock. There'll be a team presentation at seven, and then some small group, facilitated small group discussions that come after that. And I think if you're looking for a good summary of, of that process, and what the teams have heard, that would be the, definitely the night to, to check in with them. We have been working on and working with Citizens League on developing a public participation element for our 2012, 2013 budget process. That element is, is almost ready, and so we have scheduled the meeting opportunities for folks to, who are interested to become involved in this process. And this is for, for, for Councilmember Bennett, I'm changed, there's a change in what I told your group the other day, so this, I'll, I'll note that. We had originally scheduled one of these meetings to occur on Monday, October, October 31st, and we've had to change that one. So the meetings are, they're, they're all three that week. The first one is Tuesday, November 1st, from nine to 11:00 at Arneson Acres. The second one is Wednesday, November 2nd, from 1:30 to 3:30. So first one's a morning, second one's an afternoon, and that's at the Community Center. And the third one is Thursday, November 3rd, and that's from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening, and that's at the Public Works Maintenance, Maintenance Center. So we'll be doing a fair amount of media on this to get people interested in coming. But those are the dates that are, that we're going to be looking at. There is a, a program that Hennepin County is working on called Open to Business. And the Open to Business Program is something developed by Hennepin County HRA, and they are offering $5,000 matching grants to fund local open to business programs. The Open to Business Program is a program that's really targeted towards small business consulting and entrepreneurial startups. It's something I think we should be interested in here in Edina, and I think we're getting some more information. But I put our, I put our, I've given them our letter of interest, that we're interested in, in participating in the program. And I'll bring you more information in greater detail about that in, in the very near future.
Is there someone, some Edina resident involved here?
Yeah.
Because he sent us something earlier.
Did he? His, his name is Rob Smolyn, and.
Right.
You might recognize him more by, he was the guy, I think he wrote to all of you, he had a tree fall in his house, and he got great service, and from the fire department, he was very appreciative. And, but that's, this is what he does. He's a small business consultant, and he works for the Open to Business Program for Hennepin County. So that's a great way to meet new county residents and county employees. The PACE Program, did you mention this, Mayor?
I did not.
Okay. We have been invited to make a presentation about what we're working on for the PACE Program here in town, at a meeting that's been convened by Senator Franken, Senator Franken or his staff, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure.
The call I got was from Senator Franken, so.
Okay, so he, he may be there as well.
He's got his staff, yeah, I think he will be there.
I've had a couple of conversations with his, with his Washington-based staff about what we're doing. They're very interested in it. Evidently, our city is kind of leading the way in the commercial PACE Program. We had a staff discussion about it again today. We've been continuing to work with the EEC people, and also some of the advocates that are getting involved in it on a statewide basis. So we're continuing to develop that program, and it's, it's kind of on pace to come to the council on November 15th. There's a, a couple of different EEC items that'll be on your agenda that night.
On that topic, do you want to have someone from staff come to that meeting on the 24th? Or how do you want to handle the presentation of what we're doing? Because it's, I think they've got, we'll be given about 10 minutes to make a presentation.
I think it might be me.
Oh, good, good.
We have.
Got a couple of folks from Energy and Environment that are, that I want to be there, too. Bill Sircz, who's been involved in the program with his day job at MPCA.
Yeah.
And then I think Paul Thompson is a communication person, is hoping he can attend as well. We've got to figure out, their seating is, the capacity is limited, so I've got to get a clearance from them. So the two of us and maybe two others.
An issue that, that we plan to advance, or would like to advance to the council on November 1st, concerns the, the proposed pedestrian bridge over France Avenue. There is, there is continued to be discussion on whether this is a project that we should be interested in fostering, moving ahead, moving away from. There's a, there's, I think, a recommendation from, from a past council action that says we should be pursuing it. There seems to be a recommendation now from the ETC that perhaps we shouldn't. We really want to get some, get a definitive view of this from the current city council, so we can, at least from a staff standpoint, decide which direction we're going to go in. So we'd like to, we have a meeting coming up with some representatives from Hennepin County next week, and we'll brief, we'll get their most current information about the project. But we really would like the, the council to take that up and share your thoughts with us on the 1st of November.
And I have some specific questions that would be, for me, really helpful to have answers before we have that council discussion. If I send them to you by email.
Please do, and Director Hul and I can prepare for them, because we'd like to get you fully informed, if we can, for a good discussion that night.
Thank you.
The last item I have for you is one that sort of is in the fits in the housekeeping file, but is how we want to handle your email in the future. We had a brief, we've been, we get occasionally folks from the public who are interested in knowing what your individual email addresses are. And we have individual emails for you, but we don't have them activated yet. We can.
What do you mean, city?
City, yep, yep. So, you know, ace wenson at.
I'll forget to check at Menominee.
So here, the, the question is, how do you want to do this? It's.
What's published right now online for our contact information? It's just phone number, right?
It's the Edina mail, the Edina mail address. And the Edina mail address is what most.
With our phone number, right? You know, some councils just do their own emails. I mean, I, I almost would prefer that to get, have an email, our individual email address is not our phone numbers, and not the @ciadina address. Because people can correspond faster. I think a, a telephone number is a higher threshold of communication for some.
This is my problem. Not all of mine are going to come through summer and are going to spam, but none of the Edina email ones ever go to spam. So I'm hesitant to have you just send it to my Gmail account.
And I, I don't think I want you to make this decision tonight. I just want to tell you just kind of what your options are, and we'll, I'll raise this again at the November 1st meeting, but it, it's, you know, there are issues regarding how we handle the information, and what the records retention is, and all of that. I mean, one, it, it may seem odd to people that they communicate through the Edina mail piece to you, but at least the benefit of that is that you're all getting that same email at the same time.
Right.
There, so there are issues if we, if we tried to do the individual thing.
Plus I know you're.
But, but give that some thought, and let's.
What are the issues with having individual email? Because again, I look at other, other council contacts, and it's all their individual emails.
You, you got to manage them, for one thing.
Not, not, I'm talking about our, not CI Edina emails, I mean, our own private addresses. Why, why can't you just publish?
Your, so the.
So josh@joshsprague.com, jonie@comcast. Why can't we do the emails like that?
In fact, that's what I've been, my cards have my home phone number and my home email address on it. And I've been using that, and I have actually, City Manager Hughes informed me that I would be responsible for holding on to the communication sent to me, and I have quite a violent system.
We already are, though. We already are.
And I am. So I, so I already retain with the full understanding of that.
There, you may have, for, in one, for one possible reason, is you may have some, some privacy concerns about mixing public data with private data. That, that's one reason that, that some elected officials don't like to handle it that way.
But my question again is, it seems like the majority of councils out there just put their own private email addresses. I mean.
I agree, that's probably true.
For best practices for retention, all you got to do is have a folder that says council, and you drag it into the folder. I mean, do we need to do some technology training? Looks like we may have to figure out your spam folder over here as well.
My Gmail spam kicks a lot of things into spam. You'd be surprised what it kicks into spam.
So in which case, we would put our phone number and our email addresses, and let people choose, you have both, and call it a day.
So we can, we can do that, or we, we can give you the, the same kind of email address protocol that we have, that staff uses. So mull this around a little bit, and take a look at some other cities, and see what you think, what, what works well. We, there's nothing really compelling us to do anything different than what we do right now, but if there is interest in it, we should do it in a coordinated way.
May I make one other management suggestion or, or observation? And that is, when something is sent to us as a group, it has been my understanding that I can retain or discard. If it comes from the city, the city has a record of it, as Councilmember Swenson pointed out.
Right.
But also, if it comes to us, it's sent to the city, but also us individually, the city has a record.
That's true.
With all of that transmission on it. And finally, I have, I, other council members have used this with other issues and pieces of correspondence, where we can send to the city and ask that it be sent to all council members, and then a record is at City Hall.
That's right.
So those three options are all also possible.
That's right.
Thank you.
That's all I.
Good, thanks. I found one other item in my materials, and this was a letter from the Minnesota National Guard about us becoming a Yellow Ribbon community. And a Yellow Ribbon community is a community with, that unites all the services and resources that are available within the community to help service members and their families before, during, and after mobilizations or deployments. So I'm going to pass this down to you, Manager Neil, and ask you to take a look at it, and give us your thoughts on whether or not you think we ought to consider being a Yellow Ribbon community. Member Bennett.
I have one last question, Your Honor, when you're finished with.
Sure.
And that is, Manager Neil, you described the events again for Grandview. Could you repeat? It's my understanding that the Tuesday events are the focus groups that will run throughout the day. And Thursday evening is the event you described.
From 6:30 to 8:30 at the Senior Center.
That's correct. So Thursday, Tuesdays is focus group after focus group after focus group, starting at eight, and going nine, 10, 11, 12, 1, 2, 4, 6, 7, 30. The, the summary event that is going to capture it all and explain it all is Thursday night, starting at 6:00.
And my question is, what's happening on Wednesday? Because a member of the Steering Committee contacted me yesterday, and she's been trying to find some publicity about what's happening on Wednesday, and can't find it.
Well, what, what I see is happening on Wednesday appears to be the Steering Committee processing its own information, getting ready for Wednesday, for Thursday night. Does that seem right, Carrie?
That's correct. And the, the consultant team will be doing some sketchups and working together. The public can come in and monitor that, watch that, give suggestions.
Where and at what time will that be taking place?
That's at the Hughes Pavilion. That's all day on Wednesday.
Yep. 9:00, it starts. There's a public open house at noon. There's a teamwork session at 1:30, and a Steering Committee meeting at 6:30 that night.
Thank you.
One other thing I thought of, Herberger's opens November 9th.
Yes.
Have your ribbon cutting in, in the morning on November 9th, so.
I think we should have a group of us with shopping bags be the first customers at Herberger's.
I know my wife will be there.
I think that would be great fun.
Anybody need a house, got to pay for those shopping.
I think we should have a coordinated effort.
All right, well, yeah. You, you may find whoever's there willing to do that.
I think so.
All right. Anyone else? Think of other things we wanted to discuss with council? All right, very good. Stand adjourned. We stand adjourned.
So there's one more Perisoli restaurant.